Do have folks participating remotely. So it's probably helpful if you were near the microphone to keep your voice up. So that not only the folks who are live here today, but the remote folks might hear you as well.
Okay. So thank you Commissioner Davis for the introduction and Commissioner Lovacey and Commissioner Fix for allowing us to be here today. For those of you who don't know, I'm Carrie Wade. I'm the CEO with United Way here in Fairfield County. And Emily and I are here today just to tell you a little bit about the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. For those of you who aren't aware, we offer a free book to be mailed to children's homes once a month from the time they are born until they are five years old. And so you may wonder, why is this important? And why would we want to fund this program? What we know is by the age of three, a child's brain is eighty percent fully developed. So one of our initiatives at United Way is literacy and education. And we want to really help kids prepare for school, succeed in school, and then move on after school to be financially stable. So this program, knowing that children's brains are eighty percent developed by the time they are three, is a really important stepping stone for a lot of the children in Fairfield County. We have over nine thousand kids in Fairfield County between the ages of zero and five. A lot of those children are not attending a preschool. So this Dolly Parton Imagination Library is a huge key in getting them prepared for kindergarten. What we also know is kids that aren't prepared for kindergarten are not as likely to succeed for their third grade proficiency testing. And what we know statistically speaking, from the Ince Foundation and years of research, is that kids who cannot be proficient in the classroom by third grade are four times more likely to drop out of school and therefore have a forty percent, forty-two percent less income than their peers that graduate with just a high school diploma. So that kind of sets the stage for United Way and why we are so invested in this program. We want to get those kids to get ready for kindergarten, help them succeed through school, be able to graduate from school and continue on to financial literacy or to financial literacy. So just to give you an example, we started this program in two thousand and twelve in Fairfield County. In two thousand and twelve, we had eighty-six kids that received the book that first year. Again, we have nine thousand three hundred and fifty-four kids in Fairfield County eligible to receive this book. And the month of May, we mailed out to five thousand one hundred and four children. So that's fifty-four percent of the kids that are eligible. So again, although we have a long way to go, we've also come a long way and we're excited about the progress that we've made. And thanks to Commissioner Lovacey and his help in getting this program pushed forward this year. At the beginning of the year, we were only at forty-eight percent of the eligible kids enrolled in Fairfield County. We're already at fifty-four percent. And forty, once we get forty more kids registered, which will probably happen within the next two weeks, we will be at fifty-five percent of the eligible children receiving books in Fairfield County. Again, that's fifty-five percent of the kids that were getting books into their hands so that they can start understanding how those pictures and words correlate to each other. The hope is that those parents are reading to the children so that they can get the comprehension on top of all of this. So that they're ready to start kindergarten in the falls when they start when they're aged five. So how do we do this? It costs about one hundred and sixty-five dollars per year per child. So in the state of Ohio, we have the Ohio Governor's Office, First Lady Dewine, has a huge initiative with early literacy and has really, really embraced the Ohio, or the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. So in the Governor's Office, we, they fund actually fifty percent of all of the the Dolly Parton Imagination Library throughout the state of Ohio. So out of that hundred and sixty-seven, fifty percent is already covered by the Ohio Governor's Office, which is a huge help to us. But the other fifty percent comes back to Fairfield County. So the Fairfield County Foundation has helped cover those fees. United Way goes out and gets sponsors to help cover the fees. And then again, the Fairfield County Commissioners. Without all of that support, we would not be able to do this and we would not be able to make an impact on these kids' lives and help get them ready for kindergarten. So with that, I would like to see Emily, first of all, anything that I didn't touch on that you think would be important for them to know?
Some of these books are truly important. They're books that you may print to your kids, like Corduroy, Here We Come Kindergarten, and all these different books that have such a truly important meaning. And inside the book, it will tell you like different questions. So once you're done reading, it'll say, hey, think about this. So it is giving them that little lesson while you're spending just five minutes with them each night. So that's why we are truly happy to be a part of this initiative.
And again, I think Emily brings up a good point because oftentimes, especially, you know, even myself, I consider myself educated, but when I was reading to my children when they were growing up, I'd read the book and I just wanted to go to bed. Right? I was exhausted, they were exhausted. But again, at the beginning of every book, it gives parents a list of questions to talk about after the book to help make sure that those children are connecting the dots and getting that comprehension piece and putting two and two together and just offering some discussion tips so that again, the parents are talking to those children.
And some of the books are even bilingual. So they'll even add in bits of Spanish, just little keywords for the kids to reference.
So with that, that's just a very brief snapshot of our Ohio Dolly Parton Imagination Library. If you know someone who has children between the ages of zero and five, it's very easy to register. You can look it up on the United Way's website, you can look it up on the Ohio Governor's website, or you can just Google Dolly Parton Imagination Library and find it. We have a lot of community partners that help us get this program out throughout the community. The libraries, both the Ohio, or the Fairfield County Library and the Pickerington Library both pushed this out. Fairfield Medical Center has been very gracious that they give packets to every mother who comes in and delivers. So the Ohio, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library registration goes to each, goes home with each newborn out of Fairfield Medical Center. I know Job, the Family Services also has information in their waiting area. So again, we have a lot of partners that help get this information out. But as I said, we still have about four thousand kids left to go. So any help that we can get from you around the table and those of you here in the audience today, we would greatly appreciate, appreciate getting that out to those children who are eligible to receive these free books. And with that, I'd like to open it up to questions.
How do you sponsor a child, Carrie?
To sponsor a child, you just contact the United Way office. Again, it's a hundred and sixty-seven dollars a year per kid. And then the Ohio, the Ohio Governor's Office does fifty percent of that. So what we ask for is just fifty percent of that one sixty-seven. And you can write a check to United Way in cash. We take credit cards. We can even send you direct bills if you want to pay that by annual or quarterly. Thank you. Administrator Portal.
Well, on behalf of the Commissioners, we just thank you for what you're doing and for being here today and for just really being unflappable. Under any conditions, we really do appreciate you ladies and appreciate what you're trying to do to help some kids read.
Thank you.
I, I know many of us maybe take it for granted that, that that's all going fine and that everybody is able to take care of that themselves without the assistance that you're trying to provide. But if you've been in the trenches for just a little while, you know that that's, that's not what's going on out there. So I really appreciate your help.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being with us today. I'm gonna see if Commissioner Davisi has any questions or comments.
So I do. And quite frankly, I've learned a lot. You know, we, we take for granted many times that everybody knows how to read. But absolutely, that's not the case. Matter of fact, foundation of any of your skills starts with reading. And the idea that eighty percent of a child's brain is formulated by age five, that's, that's a pretty big deal. But I'm, I'm very excited about what's happening here, but I did promise the Governor a hundred percent, so.
And no pressure, thank you.
Yeah, no pressure. But, but how's the funding coming? I mean, to help, help with this endeavor, how are we looking?
So funding, again, funding is always, it's always that double edged sword. You, you get some, you lose some, you get some, you lose some. So I'd say right now, we are really good. As you know, because we had talked to the Commission about this, for a long time, we would have a waiting list of two hundred plus kids because we just didn't have the enough money to pay, to get those books sent. So we're at the point now where we do not have a waiting list. So as soon as a child enrolls, they start getting books within a month. The books are actually mailed out of Tennessee. So we don't mail those directly from our office. And sometimes there's just a little bit of a lag time by the time we get them enrolled and then Tennessee actually gets the books mailed to the homes. So it's usually about a thirty to forty-five day window. So we are at the point now where we can mail books as they come in. I don't foresee us needing a waiting list until probably about a year from now. But if we don't continue to get funding in about a year, then we'll be back at that same point where we'll have to start a waiting list again in about a year. But I think we have an awesome stack in the United Way office that is dedicated to this program because again, we all see the value. And they are being very creative and finding new ways to help fund and support the program to make sure that these kids continue to get books. And what we are finding are the parents who get these books and they are reading them with the children, the children love them. Oftentimes, we're getting stories about the kids are crying once they get their last book because they don't get a book in the mail anymore. So a lot of those parents that have had such a good success story with these are now actually willing to help fund the program and sponsor a child to continue going since their children had such a great experience. So we are trying to be creative in our funding and looking for new opportunities. But again, we wouldn't be where we are with the help of you Commissioner Lovacey personally and Fairfield County Commissioners as a whole. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fix, any questions or comments?
Just, you know, we talked about attacking generational poverty and literacy is one of those things that is a kind of foundational cause. And while we're working on housing and workforce development and transportation, that next level of things that we need to work on include literacy, which is, you know, attacks in a, in a great way. So thank you for what you and the United Way are doing. Thank you to Commissioner Lovacey for leading the charge here in Fairfield County. It's a big, big deal that kind of slips under the radar, but I'm glad you're here today to promote it and talk about it and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I'll say, Commissioner Davis, if you don't mind me saying, you brought up the education piece and I can tell you, my husband's an educator, so I get to hear it firsthand. And he taught high school for over fifteen years and then switched to elementary school. And by the time you get to high school, it's harder to recognize some of those disparities of where they started in kindergarten versus some elementary. It's easier to see those huge gaps in the students when they're still in elementary school. And so again, we don't think of Fairfield County as being completely, completely diverse, but it's here. And what we're doing, not only are we helping these kids, especially when you look at like the English second language families that are in Fairfield County. Not only are we helping these kids, kids ages zero to three and zero to five learn English to start kindergarten, we're also helping those parents start learning some of those words and help with, improve their English skills as well. So again, it's a huge, huge success. And we're happy to be able to just provide a small part of that for a kid's life.
Well, you're, you're a bright spot in our day, every day, both you ladies are. And we appreciate the work that you're doing and look forward to that continuing and for the Commissioners' relationship with both you ladies wherever your careers may take you, we'll be watching.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I'm gonna take a point of privilege and go outside the regular order of business. Normally, at this point, we would go to an opportunity for voters and taxpayers to address the Commission, which we will do very shortly. But at our voting pattern is when we would normally present proclamations and then we have a resolution for those proclamations. But because we are overcrowded today, we're gonna make the proclamation presentation now. And then those folks who are recipients of that proclamation, you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave, which would be okay, you know, create a little more seating area. But you know, no pressure on you. But the Commissioners do understand and are concerned about the one in nine people over sixty years of age suffer some form of abuse every year. And so we're going to recognize that our, our voting pattern, we're gonna use, recognize June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month. And so those folks who are here in support of trying to find that abuse and prevent it in the future, if you'd like to come forward, we can make that presentation down there. Yeah, you can. Or read it, or whatever you want to do.
Thanks.
Yeah, sure. Morning.
Thanks. That's all I had.
Yeah. One more.
I would go really fast.
Yeah. I got my perfect one.
So I'll read this resolution real quickly. Friends of the U.S. Department of Justice estimates that one in nine Americans sixteen and older suffer from abuse each year. The Ohio Attorney General's Elder Justice Unit investigates elder abuse, neglect, and financial exploitation against the elderly and disabled adults. And collaboration, awareness, and education in Fairfield County will assure older adults in our communities will live with dignity and free from harm and theft. And Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Adult Protective Services, will continue to work with other advocates and professionals to increase awareness and help fight elder abuse. Now, therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners does hereby formally declare June two thousand twenty-three to be Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Fairfield County Board of Commissioners urge all Fairfield County residents to recognize that our elders deserve to live with dignity and in safe and caring communities. Thank you all. Put it on. Thank you all.
Thank you very much to the Board of Commissioners for recognizing this important month. And I would like to introduce Sarah Fortner, our Deputy Director of Protective Services, and ask her to go ahead and introduce the rest of the team.
So, morning everyone. So with us today, we actually, I'm gonna just point out there are two kind of stars in the show right now. So Viv and Chloe are actually adult protective services caseworkers. So they are the ones who go into the field and are supporting and assessing concerns of abuse or neglect or exploitation. So really, they're, they're the true superstars here this morning. So thank you. I'd also like to just take a quick moment to our community partners in the room. We have our World Elder Abuse Event coming up on June fifteenth from eight to ten in the Liberty Center. Like to invite you all to come. We have a speaker there that's gonna talk about isolation with our elderly population. So we have a really great agenda planned. So please, if you can make it, we'd love to have you there. Thank you.
And Bennett, go kinda tag like you like each other for just a minute.
Thank you.
That's it. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all very much. We'll return.
Take your cookie.
Now return to the regular order of business. And I hope folks in the audience understand that that was meant as a courtesy, not a further delay to those who'd like to address us today. At this time, the Commission will invite voters and taxpayers to address us. If you would like to do so, please come to the podium if you're able and state your name and residential address. We do have a three-minute rule we need to enforce today. And then we would also ask that you direct your comments to the Commission as opposed to other members of the audience. Under those terms and conditions, is there anyone who would like to address the Commission at this time?
Hello, my name is Ray Stevens, twenty-four forty-four West Point Road, Long Island, Ohio. And I realize that this group that's here, some of them may have left, but elder abuse, I'm trying to stay away from any organization that deals with elders. About ten days, I'm going to be ninety years old. So I'm working hard not to be a part of it. So now I've got a comment to make. This comment deals with the fact that most of the people in this room sitting around the tables and so forth know that my wife has been discussing what has happened the last two years that she's been coming here, talking about the pressures that have been put on people in this country by government, news media, and all of this, making it sound like COVID is a death nail for people. They did make it a death nail for some people because of the claims they put into effect. We know that. Now, we know that Judy was, the last two years been talking about this. And it's not right. If we knew the Constitution, we knew, we'd note that they don't have that right to. Now, I would like to say that what we need most in this country is forgiveness and prayer. Dr. Stanley, who is a very strong Christian preacher out of the land of Georgia, passed away about a month ago. He's a year older than I am. He was strong right up to the end. But what we need to do, he listed nine points, I don't think I'll cover them all, but some points that have to be prayed for. Number one, I want to pray that they would realize that these are the influential men and women in government who make key decisions. I pray that they realize their personal sinfulness and their daily need for cleansing of their sin by Jesus Christ. I pray that they would recognize, number two, pray that they would recognize their personal inadequacies for fulfilling their past, that they would depend upon God for knowledge, wisdom, and courage to do what is right. I pray that they would, number three, reject all counsel that violates spiritual principles, trusting God to prove them right. Four, pray that they would resist, who presents then pressures then to violate their conscience. Five, that's the last one I'm going to pray. Four, that they would reverse and cleanse of idolism, humanism in this nation. And I should say, that also includes communism. Both which defy, all of them defy man rather than God. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Well, you know my theme, folks. The first headline I'll read is Becker News confirmed the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention said Johnson &amp; Johnson can't vaccine, no longer can be used in the U.S. and remaining supplies should be destroyed as they expire. But that doesn't mean that those who took the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine don't need another. Now, this is double talk or just plain stupid talk, in my opinion there. Next was the COVID of two thousand nine. Yeah, Alex Jones predicted this in two thousand nine. He predicted that the swine flu was a beta test for a police state enforcing mandatory vaccinations, forced medications, and quarantines. Next, hospital protocols caused more deaths in two thousand twenty and twenty-one than COVID. That's sad. The mention, in this article, it mentions that hospitals today are promoting deaths, not curing and improving health. Next, China's program encourages marriage and childbearing. Can you believe that? And then I had my own little comment and had America encourages abortions and decreased size of family. Now, why? And then also, this judge tells Biden attorney that motherhood isn't an illness. So how is abortion a cure here in America? Next, now that the WHO has declared the end of the COVID pandemic, it's time for states to take action to limit the power of public health so that a repeat never happens again. And an additional comment here is, so we here at this meeting would like to know what steps you Commissioners will take to see that public health will never be able to repeat their actions again. You have three right here in power. Next, the downfall of a nation. There are three steps in the downfall of a nation that have occurred so repeatedly that it's quite a wonder and puzzlement also why man, these things happening, can't see. The first step that leads to downfall of nations is some religious apostasy where man turns his back away from our living Lord and starts to practice idolatry. Now idolatry, we've learned, comes in many forms, or many idolize the dollar. Then there are those to, who idolize sex and pleasure. Plus, there's those who idolize power. Let's be honest and face it, and my fellow beings, about what our nation gives its all. Because that will become our idolized God then. So if it's not real God, we will fall. The second step that leads to downfall of nation is the step of moral awfulness, where the black areas known formerly as sin turn gray, even white in our presence. And even though these horrible black areas now receive the approving white look, we who call yourselves children of the blessed Lord don't protest on the facts of His book. It seems we've become too busy to get involved, thus we portray we don't really care because of all of inaction and our silence and due to our lack of fervent prayer. All of the above lead to the downfall's third step, which is political anarchy. It brings about suddenly, my dear citizens, the discovery that we're not free. For we will have been made slaves to a new power and to a new form of government. And all we who have called ourselves our Lord's children will cry out and wonder where He went. Wake up, America. You must wake up fast, for time is rapidly slipping by. When will ever be able to do anything to change so this government won't die? And you know, the words of this came to me
Please conclude your remarks.
in nineteen eighty-four. Thank you.
Then anyone else who would like to address the Commission at this time?
Hello, my name is Basma. I live in Millersport, Ohio, one two oh six, say, Broke Street. I also have a house in Pickerington, one two five, going by, Joe Togan Lake. I am against the soil projects that you guys are looking at to approve for the state, for the county of Billfield. You cannot destroy the prime farm land that we have grown our crops on to help feed everybody. It is a disruption to take away the top soil and put gravel down and you will never ever be able to farm that land again. I remember as a small child, my dad had me up in the farms picking up rocks throughout the day. So putting a full level of gravel is just ridiculous. So please think about the farmland, think about the crops, think about the local farmers that, that is how they make their living to really concentrate on looking at all aspects of this with the soil cubes. Plus, all the electricity that is coming from them goes to thirteen other states. There's a image there in Ohio. That's ridiculous on that part also. So thank you for your time and appreciation for listening to me. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee LaCron, I live at 2835 County Line Road, Rushville, Richland Township. I grew up in Walnut Township, lifelong resident of Fairfield County. I am also opposed to the solar project. I believe that this county is and has been unique in its farming capabilities for many, many years. My grandfather was a pioneer in Millersport. His, his family were the first settlers in Walnut Township. It is beyond reason to me to see why you want to take this farmland and turn it into a solar project, which in my limited knowledge, I cannot see how the climate and the area would actually benefit from this type of project. I don't think there would be enough electricity generated to really benefit most people. I don't have a lot of knowledge about this, but I do know that I think our county is best served by not going through this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dave Droll. I live at 3596 Baltimore Summers Set Road, and this is the first time I've been. So there's a reason to get me out of the house this morning. It's hard to get the information. That was one of the things I figured out. These things go on, you guys do your work, you know very little about it. But I was contacted by Eastern Cotton Tail months ago, sent flyers to the house. So they're well-funded, we know that. And it's a shame to have that money come in, influence our community, and leave a mark that will be very, very hard to erase when they're gone. The politics will change. These things will go away. The money will dry up. And I'm afraid what we might be left with in our fields, what we'll have to drive by, what we'll have to look at on our way home, and even some people right out their backyard. So I would ask you very seriously to consider the legacy that that would make for you if you get an opportunity to change this and you don't. So that's what I'm asking for you guys, just, I don't know if it's next to your house or not, but, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Crystal Orton. I live at 7625 PM Sun Road, Flannville. Um, I'm actually a school bus driver for Paver Union, and my route and a few of us would really see that ice floor. You have not seen it? Take a ride down to Cincinnati Hillsboro, wherever you get to it, up Marysville, you should not just see that. Solar panels, of course, if you're not sure what I'm talking about. Nothing against solar panels per se, but there's gotta be another way to use it. Put them on top of a new Intel, or the Google, the Facebook, put them somewhere, make it a priority that businesses have to install something to be green. I mean, I know there's always a 20% of their funding has to be towards the arts, so put something towards the green also. Put, um, put them in over parking lots there where they can actually be a shade, and cars can park underneath them, utilize that space. Don't take it from the farmlands. It's just download for us from there, and you're controlling our food and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eon Elizabeth Courtney-Berry. I live at 5320 Canal Road, Pleasantville, Ohio. Thank you guys for taking the time to hear all of the different thoughts and things on the solar projects. Um, I personally am opposed to them. Um, I think something to think about as well is the property rights. And I know that a lot of times discussion, excuse me, that comes up on Facebook on property rights, and how are we supposed to dictate what a property owner is able to do with their property? And I think that's definitely something to consider, but I think also we have to think about the property rights of all of the other people that are not signed up for the solar projects. You know, like if we want to put up a deck on our house and build an addition, or build a swimming pool, or put up a fence, we have to get a permit. And we have that, you know, usually the big orange sign that says building permit has to be checked by the zoning inspector, and different things like that. When someone signs up for a solar project, there's no notification has to be made to the surrounding property owners. There's a lot of people that might even be here today that if it wasn't for this organization spreading the word, they wouldn't even know that their neighbors had signed up. And I think that's something to think about as the property owners, the other people who are not signed up for those projects. Um, in addition, when you're selling your property, there's always the disclosure form that you have to fill out. You know, if you have something that leaves, or if this happens in this pipe, you know, you have to disclose all of that. When you, and a realtor has to disclose that information to the potential home buyer. When a property is signed up for solar panels, the realtor, and I talked to some of my realtor friends, there's not currently a law in Ohio that says the realtor has to disclose that. If they know the information and they know that that property near where the home's going to be sold is for solar panel potential, then yes, they're supposed to. I mean, ethically and morally, they should, but I mean, you know, the ethics and morals in this country are not always followed the way they should be. So, um, you know, there's a lot of times, I know that there's family members that we have, not in this county, but they have friends who purchased a home and not knowing that that, um, excuse me, that the property near them had been signed up for solar panels. And so now they're stuck in a house that's going to maybe have solar panels in their backyard that they had no idea. So I think that's something to think about as well, is that, yes, the property rights of the people that have the solar panels that, excuse me, want to put solar panels in, it is hard to say, you know, no, you cannot do this with your property. But at the same time, you have all of these other people that have to follow all these rules of, you know, permits and disclosures, yet solar companies do not have to do that at all. And it seems very unfair to all the property owners who don't have that, you know, don't have a say so, and don't even sometimes know that this, that this is coming. So thank you very much for your time.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Earl Cole. I live 4228 Baltimore Summers Set Road, Pleasantville, Ohio. My main concern is that there are property values. This thing is done with, what are we going to be left? I got a strong feeling it's going to be one heck of a mess. And I don't have the problem. The land is set up for farming, it's not commercial, it's changed over into a commercial. And I think it's morally wrong to this. And I think anyone that has a financial gain of any sort, directly and indirectly, should not have any say in what's going on. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and you have a great day.
My name is Dave Terry. I live at 8589 Nester Road, Plunkville, Ohio. I've been there almost 50 years, and I guess my biggest concern is the water runoff contamination of our wells, and I would really hate to have you guys job. Because when this thing all blows up, if it goes through, and I believe it will, somebody's going to have to say, hey, we're going to take care of these people. You know, I mean, you, you see the water, who's to say we don't know enough about this stuff? If people get sick, who's going to stand up for them? I've been to a couple of these meetings, and I've yet to hear somebody say, you know, we're going to take care of people if this thing goes belly up. So that, that's my biggest concern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Sherri Pymer, 3464 South Bank Road, Millersport. Thank goodness the land across the street from us was sold to someone who wants to maintain it as a farm, because they were, a previous owner was approached by solar company. You know, I'm against industrial solar plants on prime farmland. I've done a lot of research, and I have two articles that I'm going to give you. I didn't make copies for everybody because they're kind of long, but you can read them, and I'll supply more copies if you want. This is from a guy from, he's actually a soil specialist from North Carolina State University Extension Office, and he wrote a couple of articles that he sent me. I read one online, and, and so I thought, well, I'll just, I'll call, because it's a university extension office, they ought to know what they're talking about. And he actually answered the phone. And so he sent me some information, and one of these is considerations for transferring agricultural land to solar panel energy production. And it talks about the general economic and resource considerations, the land maintenance, the tax implications, uh, the comparison of, uh, commercial versus agricultural, wildlife. Um, it goes, you know, several points here, and I'm not going to read it all to you, but I'll give that to you. And I know Steve, or Commissioner Davis, you're trying to compile a bunch of information. The other one is, can solar energy production be converted to farmland? This man is a soil specialist, and he said, once these are decommissioned, you can never restore it to its original condition, ever. And this article goes into that. And it also goes into, now in North Carolina, they have a lot of projects that are like from 25 to 50 acres. And, uh, one of the, uh, big concerns that they have is, um, it said that approximately 40% of their solar projection sites are 25 to 50 acres containing up to 250,000 solar panels per site. Collectively, those panels weigh over 500,000 tons that will need to be transported, recycled, or disposed, and they're talking about decommissioning. Regrettably, at the moment, disposal is the only feasible option. And they're talking about decommissioning, that it costs $30,000 per megawatt, and within North Carolina, that equates to about 750,000 to 1.00 million dollars per site. That's 25 to 50 acres. Here, take that times 100. So we're looking at a lot of, and I know EDF has put out a new flyer talking about how they're going to pull the, pull the, the posts and everything. That's not necessarily true. Um, they're supposed to return it to its original condition, but, um, what they say and what they do, that's not in the contract. People who sign these leases, if it's not in the contract, they don't have to do it. And so it's, it's something that people really need. He said these contracts are not battle-tested. And so it's, it's something that is a very, very serious situation down the road.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the commissioner at this time? On behalf of the whole, please.
I'm Doctor Mike Connor. I live at 7710 Cattail, doesn't do the drive. I'm a city guy. I've only been in the country maybe 10, 11 years. And I've learned farmers value two things, they preach, and topsoil. They can't get enough, they don't want to lose. The more I learn about this project, what a mess. What a mess. My wife has been very active. Uh, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago in Millersport. There were two very interesting speakers. There was a cousin-wife farmer, and they had a portion of their farm that was not too productive. They signed lease, or they drank the punch. And they're almost in tears. What a mess it'd become. So sorry to the neighbors. There was another man who got a notice in the mail. Two days later, a project started across the street from him. He's had nothing but drainage problems, retention pool water, uh, the trucks came, 24/7 pounding, steel stakes. He's complained to EPA. And he finally got some lit out, response, well, there's nothing we can do soon. I just don't know why farmers would do this. They're supposed to be stewards of land, and as commissioners, we're stewards of the county. It's always been my impression of farmers, most of farmers were familial projects, passed on by the son. But now you're lollyfarms, all by people out of state. They're not, the people that farm that don't own the land. And I think the elephant rule is that we found out that these power companies are paying $16,000 to $20,000 a acre. Aging, retiring farmer, that's hard to resist, but still, I feel like it's probably do. There's a project, projected project right across the street from us. I'm told that that's not a valid point, but it's us. So my main concern too is contamination of water, creation of these retention pools. We have bad weather. We had a tornado not too far from us. Tornado hit a solar industrial park. Could you imagine thousands of flying metal kites coming? Lightning strikes. If they catch on fire, the fire department can't put them out, they just let them burn. It turns the contamination to the soil. You gentlemen have the power to stop this. You have the power to stop this. By making probationary zones for Walnut County. These people are smart, they're motivated, they're wearing nice, they're not going away. Drive down Cattail, drive down Bank, Canal Road, almost every third house has a sign, and they're growing and growing. The problem is getting that word, is that public plants, more and more, is going to be more and more against this project. Petition that you listen to your, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to address the commissioner at this time? On behalf of the commissioner's office, we do thank you all for coming in. As many of you have mentioned, uh, we are, um, a tremendous amount of research, hiring our own experts, uh, so that we don't have to rely on experts paid by developers or others. Uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna figure out where we need to be on this. Uh, we thank you all for your courtesy, your time and being with us today. Um, I'd like to make a motion to go outside the regular order business and, uh, go to the voting pattern from down here. Is that okay with my colleagues? Second motion?
I'm going to very simply say, and I, I put the same sign, motion to here's rise if you are able, and join us in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, which is hands, one nation, under our, indivisible,天地, and just scroll.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have any announcements?
We do not.
We want the approval of minutes for May 23, 2023 Leadership Conference.
Move.
Second. Discussion, please call and roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes past 3:0.
Move on to the approval minutes for the May 23, 2023 Review and Regular Meeting.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Please call and roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes past 3:0. From the commissioner's office, Resolution 2023-5.30.A, a resolution authorizing the approval of a proclamation.
The commissioners have moved items A, B, and C. Second.
Discussion, under discussion, I want to turn to County Administrator Portal, who in your review session would normally have a highlights of resolutions. And I would ask you if you could go to that section now, and then we'll continue. And I would also just mention to those who have an interest in the legislation, but not those who have an interest in the legislation, but that's not legislation, resolutions being considered today, please be cognizant of the fact that we kind of skipped review. So when we ask for discussion, don't be as hesitant as you usually might because something was already talked about, but please go.
Sure, Resolution B here is, um, appropriating the two million for the airport hangar project. Um, Stacy has that set up and ready to go for consideration today. Anything you'd like to add to that, Stacy, your part?
I don't think so. How about you, John?
Excited to get started.
And then, uh, sorry, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that, uh, airport project and, um, highlight a thought for some folks. Um, one of the things that the commissioners are, uh, aware of is that the cash position can say specifically, the general fund is very strong, arguably too strong. Uh, from the standpoint that if you collect, uh, taxes, revenue, fees from people, uh, that money should be then returned to the people in the form of service. That's, that's just a general rule. And when your cash position grows so high, um, there could be a concern that what you're doing is just collecting money and not returning it in the form of service. Um, being aware of that potential concern, I just want to mention three projects by way of example, uh, some things that the commissioners are trying to do, uh, to, um, alleviate that, that kind of good problem to have. Um, uh, for example, the, uh, SWAT building that was recently, uh, built for the sheriff's office, um, costs a lot of money, about one point eight million dollars. It ran a crappy rented facility and now they're in a nice, not rented facility. But what, what happens in the out years of our projections is that the elimination of the thirty-six thousand dollars in annual rent that we were paying for the former SWAT building goes away. So yes, the one point eight million dollars is being spent, but in the out years, the, the distance, if you will, between revenue and expense actually grows. So we, we improved the out year picture in terms of revenue and expense projections by building that project. Touch on the airport project. Uh, yes, we're gonna spend two million dollars in cash, uh, out of the general fund to assist the airport board, uh, in building these hangars. Important to note, there is a waitlist, uh, with a number of people that exceeds the number of hangars that we're building. So those hangars, uh, with, with paid deposits, uh, on the waitlist, those hangars will generate revenue. Now, for a number of years, um, the, um, cost of building these hangars will exceed the revenue. Um, and yes, it'll take until approximately year sixteen, I estimate, uh, before revenue from the hangar rentals exceeds, uh, the, the annual cost. But nonetheless, the point still remains, in the out years of our projections, the spread between revenue and expense increases. Um, so I just, I'm, I'm gonna stop there because of time, but I, I just want folks to understand that those types of projects that do have a cash component today, but increase the spread between the revenue and expense in the out years, those are projects that I would look favorably on. Um, uh, just one final note on that, if I might. I understand that we commissioners have a shelf life. We'll be commissioners for a while and then we won't. That's the way things go. Um, and I have seen over my thirty years, many, many people who do not, politicians, do not concern themselves with the out years, uh, beyond themselves, who simply focus on their own popularity and what they can do today to make themselves look better. And I'm saying to you, we are legitimately trying to look very far out into our projections to make sure that when our, when our time is done and someone probably younger than us, um, comes into, to this office, it should be set, set up for, for years to come. Financially, the primary responsibility of commissioners to be the funding authority for county operations and to structure that policy in a way that is for the future. So, um, I'm proud of that. Um, I don't, I don't know when I, I stop being a commissioner, when any of us does, but when we do, our, our goal is to, to hand someone the keys to a Lamborghini. Um, and then if they want to wreck it, they can wreck it, but it won't be set up that way. Please continue.
And item C is a resolution regarding an American Rescue Plan funded project. Uh, we'd had this one, uh, way back in the early stages. It's just now moved to the appropriating phase. Jeff, would you like to talk about that one?
Sure, this is the Walnut Creek Sewer District. It's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project to expand the capacity of the sewer district. Um, like our, we'd have several, uh, focused on water and sewer and this is just one of those that we're moving forward with.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Dr. Brown?
Leading to Resolution B. Ballot council reached out to the county auditor's office for information, anticipating the closing date of June twentieth, and they already have the information they needed from us.
Thank you for doing that. Uh, I, I did have an interaction locally on that issue, uh, there. Um, commissioners were certainly of the opinion that all local banks would be given the opportunity to participate. Um, I think they were. Um, I did reach out to our, our consultant on that issue to get confirmation of who was contacted and who wasn't contacted, go through that. And there, there was one little thing in there that I think might have been a hiccup. Uh, and that is in the transfer from Standing Stone Bank to Savings Bank. Not sure everything tracked over, uh, in that transition. Uh, so if, uh, now, a consultant says it did, but there's some confusion on that issue, which I, I'm not sure I'll ever get to the bottom of. Um, but nonetheless, um, um, I think the truth of the matter is the rate that was ultimately obtained, uh, was not going to be touched, um, by anyone who may have been overlooked in the effort to make sure that every local bank got the opportunity to participate. Further discussion? Let's call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero from the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash five dot thirty dot B. A resolution to approve an agreement between Fairfield County and Strand Associates Incorporated.
Senator Fairfield County Engineer, I move items D, E, F, G, and H.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, this agreement is with Strand, is part of the stormwater utility that we're setting up that, that you asked about. Um, it is a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar agreement in three separate phases. The first phase would just be data review and assessment, just kind of getting all of our assets into a digitized form where we can start to see what they look like, all of our plans, all of our storm sewers, all that kind of stuff that makes up the Drainage Maintenance District that we work with, uh, Dr. Brown and her office on right now. Um, kind of, but this is a, this would be setting up a stormwater utility in lieu of the Drainage Maintenance District. So just kind of step one of that is a three-phase process here, but the outline out.
Thank you. Further discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero from Fairfield County Family Adult and Children First Council, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash five dot thirty dot I, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated funds in a major category expense for the fund number seventy-five twenty-one, sub-fund eighty-one fifty-nine.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash five dot thirty dot J, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer, fund number one zero zero one.
Fairfield County Sheriff, I move items J and K.
Discussion. Let's call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero. From the Fairfield County Utilities, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash five dot now, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category Utilities Fund, numbers fifty forty-four and fifty-eight forty-two.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. On payment of bills, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash five dot thirty dot M, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need board of commissioners' approval.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting, discussion between six at nine AM.
So, uh, Randall, we've got the chip hearing at ten fifteen, right?
Yes.
Which I understand that hearing cannot begin prior to ten fifteen, right?
Who's noticed, yes.
Right, uh, but if it were to be a few minutes after ten fifteen, we're okay on the law, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not sure how that's gonna go, but having that conversation to alert my colleagues to that issue as they continue, uh, with the balance of this meeting, is that all right, guys?
Yeah, really just, uh, we could shorten it to just correspondence items.
Well, we can, uh, let me see what we got here on that. Uh, yeah, go ahead with correspondence and without me, you guys can do. Got it. I apologize, it's one of those scheduling days that got away from us a little bit. I thank my colleagues for their courtesy.
Michelle comments. You have a letter from the Department of Agriculture dated May twenty-second regarding boundary changes on farm number sixty-eight forty-five. From the Office of the County Auditor, a press release dated May twenty-third titled Fairfield County Auditor's Real Estate Office to be featured in twenty twenty-three tour homes. There are press release dated May twenty-fifth titled Family Adult and Children First Council, moving under the direction of Fairfield County Job and Family Services. An article in the Lancaster Eagle Gazette dated May twenty-fifth titled County to build fourteen new hangars at Fairfield County Airport. From the Fairfield County Health Department and the mosquito strain schedule. A letter from ODOT dated May twenty-six regarding state route fifth, state route one fifty-eight through Path Road intersection in Fort Smith. A memo from Audrey McBrown dated May twenty-fifth, subjects the binder reference tool, inter, internal control manual level two, budget projections for general fund revenue and the June newsletter. June twenty twenty-three Auditor's Ledger, news from the County Auditor's Office, a newsletter from Eastern Cotton Tail Solar Project and letters and emails from Fairfield County residents regarding solar energy.
Thank you, Michelle. Do we have a legal update today?
Specifically, Mr. Fix, but I did want to introduce our law clerk for the summer. This is William Holm, he'll be with us this summer and just wanted to bring him up and say hi.
Good to see you here. Mr. Holm. So I think we first met when you were seven. Happy to have you on the team. Commissioner Lev, sorry, fire away.
So are we going back to county administrative butt bit?
That's all right, I think we're good. We can move forward, you can go to old business.
Good. Commissioner Fix, anything else, there are old visitors.
We did have an opportunity to meet with, uh, ODOT, uh, on the Far East Freeway project last week, uh, up in, uh, Pickerington and, um, you know, they're starting to make progress in the I-two-seventy, I-seventy interchange, which anyone who lives in the northwest part of the county knows that's been a disaster for generations. Um, and then they, they kind of shared their timeline and their plans for, uh, moving further east, you know, all the way, uh, you know, kind of to the halfway point of the, uh, Fairfield County line. Um, and while it takes a great deal of patience to recognize that it takes years and years and years to do the kind of work, um, that it takes to build a highway or to build an overpass or an entrance, um, it, it finally feels like they're taking it seriously and taking us seriously and they're, um, cementing their plans to move forward with all the things that we need along I-seventy to alleviate some of the issues that we have in the northwest part and to position Fairfield County well for the future with regard to everything that's going on to our north and to the east. So, um, that's a very positive meeting. It's good for now. I did have a chance to spend some time with our, um, our juvenile, uh, court has a, a diversion program that they, um, put some kids into and, uh, got a chance to, uh, hang out with those kids for an hour or so, uh, last week. And, uh, you know, they've got a bunch of different activities that they do. Um, it was cool to see that program working. Uh, these are kids who otherwise might have gone to the juvenile detention center and that's not a good outcome for anybody. Um, decent kids, right? Um, polite and smart, um, just maybe have made a couple of bad decisions. So, um, it was, it was good to see that in action and spend time with them. And I appreciate, uh, the court inviting me to, to go hang out with those kids. That's all I have, thank you.
So last week I had the opportunity to, uh, attend, uh, Sheriff's, uh, Director Convention, Court Ceremony, uh, recognizing several who, uh, provided life-saving, uh, several who had, uh, years of service. You know, here in Fairfield County, I thought, I thought they was made very clear that here in Fairfield County, you see, uh, a lot, uh, of, uh, lack of support for law enforcement, but I thought it was made very clear that that's not the case here in Fairfield County. We, we, uh, love our law enforcement and very supportive of the absolutely wonderful work they did. Uh, the other, uh, item, you know, obviously every one of us um, had, uh, had the ability to celebrate, uh, Memorial Day yesterday. And, you know, uh, I think many times, uh, they just look, many people look at this, uh, a day off. You know, they ought to, they ought to look at it, uh, in a much, uh, bigger frame. Uh, those who sacrificed the ultimate, uh, thing is to give their life for this country. I, uh, my wife's, uh, uncle actually was killed at Guadalcanal. Uh, her father was, uh, in with the hand grenade during World War Two, took his leg off and obviously he didn't die, but he just bailed, he spent almost two years in the hospital. And many others, uh, many of my good friends during Vietnam sacrificed their life, uh, in a very unpopular war. Uh, again, we just need to reflect upon, you know, what a wonderful country like we live in and the ability that we have, the freedoms we have because somebody paid the price for it. We need to recover that. So Commissioner Fix, any news?
No, sir.
I have nothing as well.
I'm, I'm making a motion that we recess for five minutes and, and ahead of the, uh, chip meeting, uh, chip hearing.
Motion's not required, but we'll be in recess for the next five minutes.
Got to come back and sign.